Welcome to the Thursday, whoa, wait, Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Sometimes you just read. Meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording this meeting disclose that they are doing so. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following correspondence will be recorded. A memo from Dr. from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at CTEC, debated November 4th, 2019 regarding the Walter E. Quigley, Junior Student of the Month awards for October 2019. Long Meadow student honored this month was Charles Miranda, Building/Property Maintenance, David Good, Carpentry II, Logan Jubert Hopkins, Integrated Occupational Prep. There are minutes to be approved?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2019 school committee meeting as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? See, and I call for a vote, all in favor? I will now open the floor for any visitor comments. Have a seat at the microphone and please state your name and address, thank you.
Deborah Levy, 162 Williams Street. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to express my grave concerns about the proposed Tennessee Gas/Colombia Gas Metering Station to be built on the grounds of the Long Meadow Country Club, just a quarter mile from Wolf Swamp Road Elementary School. I am aware, and I know that you are aware, that the Select Board is in support of the Pipeline Awarenesses Group stand on this issue. We don't come before you to be repetitive or annoying, although that may be what the result is. Rather, our presence is meant to underscore the depths of our concerns for our town and especially its children to you, the school board. As a nation, we put tremendous resources into keeping our children safe from those who would enter our schools with malicious intent. Long Meadow has a very clear plan, from locked buildings to student drills to constant instant contact with first responders. All of these are in place to keep students and teachers safe. But there are other forces at work, an invisible but powerfully negative influence on the health of our students and teachers, as well as the neighborhood surrounding Wolf Swamp School. And that danger comes from the proposed pipeline metering station referenced above. These stations release raw methane as the gas is transferred from one pipeline to the other. Supposedly odorless and colorless, natural gas releases carcinogens, heavy metals, and particulates such as nitrous oxide that can result in increased levels of asthma and COPD. Our town has just voted $1.5 million to improve and expand the playing fields at Wolf Swamp. We would like to think that by denying Columbia Gas the right to build its metering station in town, we would improve the air our student athletes breathe as they play. We will do this by making sure that the air they breathe is clean. We adults do have the capacity to understand complex issues, such as the ones raised by the prospect of a metering station smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We have the power to vote to approve or negate the building of such structures. But five and seven and eight and 12-year-olds get up in the morning, brush their teeth, they get dressed, they have breakfast, they kiss somebody goodbye before going to school, where we make sure they are developing decision-making skills that they will need as adults. They do not have the power to make their surroundings safer by limiting harmful byproducts released into the air they breathe. And they do not have the power to question why this station needs to be built in the first place in light of Columbia Gas's admission this week that the demand for natural gas is weakening in the face of safer alternatives. That is our responsibility as their parents, teachers, neighbors, and school board. How do we protect the little ones who cannot advocate for themselves? We do this by educating ourselves, asking hard questions, and not allowing secrecy to defeat us in this task, the most important one we will ever have, protecting our children until they can advocate for themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, move on, school committee announcements and recognitions? Any?
I just wanted to-
Oh, sorry, Suzie?
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, because I don't think we've had a meeting since then, it seems like a long time ago, but the STEM Week experience at Blueberry Hill School. I had the chance to go over there and let me tell you, that was, that was a fun experience for the Blueberry kids. They, they really had a blast. You had kindergarteners through fifth grade, you know, helping each other, working through the marshmallow challenge and stacking cups and trying to create lots of, lots of different structures with, with, with just materials and a little bit of guidance. And the kids had a blast and so it was a great display of work. And thank you to Mrs. Scott and to Mrs. Steck for organizing it. And I know because there was like overwhelming desire for kids to be involved, that they're gonna do a couple more, which is great.
It was well attended.
Well attended, for sure, for sure.
Anybody else? Okay, move on, business with guests, Jean?
Marty?
Yeah, sure, so Jean Fontaine is our Director of People's Services for Quakes at Home. And Jean has always been good at sort of seeing around the bend and kind of recognizing how we can support students, both currently but also based on some of the needs that we're seeing down the road. So there's a memo in your packet with an explanation of a program and some supports that we're hoping to put in place at Center School and it would mirror some of the supports and programs that we have in place at Blueberry and Wolf Swamp. So Jean, thanks for joining us and thanks to Finance Sub for reviewing this proposal last week, I guess, so.
So I'm here tonight to ask for some funding, actually a transfer. We're hoping to be able to use general fund tuition, the tuition line, to, to fund staffing for Center School. So currently Center School has one partial inclusion program to serve kids in grades three through five. We're looking to expand and add a program that would be a partial inclusion program for students with disabilities to serve K through two. And that's based on a growing need. So we currently have a few students at Center that could benefit from that type of programming right now. And when we look forward to our preschool and the students that we know will be moving into Center School, we have four students that we know will need that type of programming in September. So we're looking to start the program in January of this school year to get it up and running, so with the students that are there right now and then be able to receive the preschool students as they transition to kindergarten in their neighborhood school. So we're looking for the addition of one special education teacher and one paraprofessional that would support the program. I don't know if anyone has any questions at this point?
I have any questions?
So does this require any issues with, you know, do we have the classroom to do this?
We do, we actually have a couple different spaces that Donna Hutton has identified that are empty right now that we could use. So space is actually not an issue at Center School to be able to expand the programming. And just as a point of reference, the other two elementary schools right now do both, they both house two partial inclusion programs at each school. So currently, if a student has more significant needs at Center, they're being served at Wolf Swamp and we, we just can't continue to have that school absorb all of the students that would need to access this type of programming that we see coming up in the next couple of years. So it's kind of, I think I've talked about this in the past, that the next time we expand our partial inclusion programming, it would more than likely be at Center School. And it looks like that time has, has come, so.
And potentially increase busing, right? From, because you'd have to bus children from, if they're beyond one school to another school? Like if it's at Wolf Swamp, you're in the Center District, there's potential for-
Yes, we do bus those students. When we do change their neighborhood school, we do offer busing, yeah. So we're not looking to bring, just to be clear, any students that are currently attending Wolf Swamp. We wouldn't be asking them to come back because we are targeting the K-12. So there's really no one that would fall into that right now. And, you know, these students have already transitioned from Center to Wolf Swamp. We wouldn't expect that a family, you know, be asked to do that again unless they initiated it.
Kevin, and then Suzie.
And I just want to make sure I understand our responsibility versus our choice, right? So if I understand what you're saying is next year, we will have to do this.
I would think it would be very highly likely that we would need to do that.
And so what you're saying is now we have a choice to start this-
Correct.
-to get it going and it will help some of the kids who are currently in Center.
Correct.
And next year, we will have to do it. I mean, that your prediction is we will have to do it. So we actually do have a choice now-
We do.
Or as likely, six months from now, it will be this is going to happen, we have to do it.
Yes, I would say that that's, that's accurate, yeah.
Thank you.
Suzie?
I, I just had a question about the, the salary starting level, knowing that, you know, you're probably looking for someone with a pretty good degree of experience.
So that's looking at a six-month, so that's just January to June, that's pro-rated.
Okay, yeah.
And it's just an estimate, it'll depend on where they fall in the salary schedule.
Right.
So really tonight, it would be the authorization to create the positions in the budget and then I'd come back at some point looking for a transfer once the hire occurs, hopefully in the next month or so, knowing where they fall.
Given where they're placed on the salary schedule, okay.
Any other questions?
So these are all half FTE?
Point six, that's what we did right now.
They will be a full-time position, but they'll only work six-tenth of the school year.
Got it, okay.
So in the FY '21 budget, you would see them reflected out of the 1.0 position.
And Tom, can you underscore the funding source? Just want to make sure that-
Yeah, so what was talked about would be a transfer from our tuition lines in the general fund with the creation of various in-district projects of the programs over the last few years. We've seen the district retaining students in district programs instead of an out-of-district tuition placements. So we have some funds there from various movement of students from when the budget was developed last year to where they are now. So we have the availability to support this program financially if the committee chooses to.
Any follow-ups?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say from at least the conversation we had in Finance Sub, just so you know, and so we talked a lot about, we were all very much kind of on board with the funding. It's made a lot of sense. The only thing I have brought up, and I, I was the only one in the meeting bringing this up, so. But I was bringing up more, does it make sense to be all at one school and not one school? And what Armand had brought up about the busing and a lot of other concerns were brought up and kind of negated my comments around that. It didn't change my mind, but I understood everything else. So that was the only thing to where we were very, I was more thinking through it differently. But I also never designed a program or ran a program like this. So I'll, yeah, leave it to the experts and, you know, that was the only thing we were concerned about. It wasn't about the, it obviously makes sense based off everything Jean has said. I mean, it's, it's either now or next year. But that was my, the only thing that was really brought up within the committee, so.
I think we did talk about at Finance Sub that, you know, one tuition for one student could range anywhere from $50,000 to $120,000 annually. So to be able to secure these kids would definitely be a good thing for us to be able to provide for them, to keep them home. And kids make good growth in our programs, so.
And this will give you lead time to prepare the program appropriately?
So we had that kind of luxury last year when we created the LINK program at Williams to be able to start mid-year. And it was, it was really nice coming back this September when the, you know, more kids were added into that program to already have it up and running. So we would hope to be able to do that again.
Is there a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the creation of a LINK program at Center School and the addition to the FY '20 budget of a special education teacher and parent educator to staff the program.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and second, it is, and are any further discussion or questions? See, and done, call for a vote, all in favor? Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
You too.
Thanks.
Nick, you want to join us at the podium? We have the list of the FY '21 capital projects in your packets. You guys are doing, or Marty or-
Marty, if you want to.
Take it away, yeah.
Yes, so Finance Sub also reviewed the capital project list that you have in front of you tonight. So annually, the Director of Facilities and myself will reach out to administrators to ask for input in regards to projects, whether they exist on the non-prioritized list, which would be on the lower section of the handout, or were prioritized in the previous year but not funded. We then kind of pull all the projects requests together and create a list and spend some time looking at what to prioritize. I think looking at it from a safety perspective, both from a facility and from a student and staff view and also from what needs we might have from an educational perspective. So tonight, we have nine projects, eight projects that are prioritized in the order of most importance to least important. We have been investing in boilers at our elementary schools. All three of the elementary schools have one new one, with Blueberry having just completed their second. So our second project request, number two, is for a boiler at Wolf Swamp. It will replace their second one. I would anticipate the FY '22 request will have the second boiler at Center. Our first project is replacement or currently to remove all of the glass in the trophy cases here at the high school. We, there was an incident a few, a year and a half ago, or so ago regarding one of them exploding. So at this point, we're just not comfortable in leaving them there. We're working with the town architect, engineer to come up with a solution that we can put something in so that we can display all of the work and trophies for the various programs, but knowing that the students will be safe. And then the third one, we, this past summer, had to replace a set of fire doors here at the high school, the set below the main stairwell. There is five remaining sets that are not operating properly. They close but not latch all the time. And so again, from a safety perspective, it's a phased project where we would do two sets for the next two years and then the, the final fifth set would be in FY '23, again, assuming that we receive funding approval for those. The fourth project would be to potentially enclose the sixth grade or provide some partitions in the instructional space in Glennbrook, down in the lower level. A few years back, about 10 years or so, we added new lockers, which required us to put some walls, they don't go all the way to the top. So we're looking at that, we'll see what costs come back at. Some initial assessment is it will be well into the six figures. So we're, we're working with the engineer on that also still. And then the fifth would address a, an issue over at Blueberry in the parking lot. As you're coming in and going around towards the front door over by the kitchen and where the dumpster is, there is a dry basin, for lack of my technical terms here.
Correct term.
So it doesn't, it can't absorb all of the, the melting during the winter and so we end up with a large area where there's ice buildup. DPW, I think, does the, does a great job trying to address it, but we must certainly can't keep up with it all the time. This would allow it to get connected to a sewer line and allow for it to drain instead of refreezing and melting. The cycle going on and on. The sixth project is energy management systems at the two middle schools. Currently, right now, we have no way to monitor Williams. So when there's cold temperatures, there's no way to give notice to DPW that there's an issue with either the temp or that there's a problem with the burner. So this would allow us the ability to monitor the building remotely. Glennbrook has some very basic system, but nowhere near to the level we have in the other four buildings. So this would be an investment into the energy management system to give us the ability to monitor and control settings on the heating system. The seventh request is for a replacement of the roof esplanade, which is below the pavers on the connector between the two buildings. It's getting approximately almost 30 years, 25 to 30 years now. I believe it was 95 when the renovation was, happened at Center. And there have been ongoing issues with leaks specifically at the ends next to the building. DPW has developed a contraption to catch the water. But I do think at some point, we're, we're gonna have to look at that and possibly pull up the pavers and replace the rubber membrane. And the last item, paint a coat, a coat of paint can go a long way. We've had this on our request for years. Capital tells us it's not a capital project. We tell them we don't have the money and the budget for it from a maintenance perspective. So we're putting it back on after the investment school committee did this past summer. I think the results are so noticeable and we can get some painting done throughout the district. So Nick and I talked about it and again, we thought we'd go back and see if we have maybe some sympathetic gears this time around. But, so those are the nine, the prioritized projects that we're submitting to the Capital Planning Committee or to you for review and consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Nick, I'm sure has any, a little more technical understanding that he might be able to answer any questions on.
I will open up the floor for any questions? Go ahead.
All right, I'll just fire the annoying questions.
Go ahead.
As we go down, how, how long do boilers last?
Generally, we hope to get 20, 25 years ahead of them.
Okay, so the fact that this one is from 2001 is not like, that's about ballpark the range that we expect to replace them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, you know, Kevin, we've had an issue there, burn-in boilers. So they have a history with sections cracking in them, which is what we've experienced. And this one's been leaking for a couple of years. We've kind of kept it together and operational.
So we're gonna buy a non-burn-in boiler?
We are gonna buy a non-burn-in boiler.
Okay, all right, you're correct. Is it strange that in a new building like the high school, that we're having to buy fire doors?
Well, the first time for me. It is, the frames are made of aluminum, whereas the, the doors are steel. So after constant wear on them, they've warped over time. It is, in my career though, the first I've ever encountered warping aluminum doors in a facility.
So-
Especially this new.
Right, I mean, that, I'm assuming those doors are five years old?
Oh, yeah.
Six, six. Twenty-twelve or so, I'd say.
All right, so seven, but I mean-
I mean, I agree.
Right, like, how do we make sure the new doors we're buying, we don't have to replace?
We're replacing the frames with steel frames and re-fixing them.
So this won't be a problem?
Hopefully.
Seven years down the road?
Yes.
All right, that's good. I, I guess a couple of questions about number four?
Sure.
I, I don't, how do we vote on something that has no price tag?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I think this project, we've been talking about it for a number of years, not only from the instructional perspective, but also from a student safety, staff safety perspective, that when we do a lockdown drill, not having any walls makes it difficult. So I think we have some very initial assessments. We're still working with the engineer on that. I'd like to give you more information in regards to the price, but I don't want to put a number out there that I, I can't support, so.
Right, and, and I mean, I know we've done projects similar to this at Smith and it's shocking how much money it is. And I feel like often the stuff that we've done where you put a new wall in is like, oh, now we have a space that has no ventilation.
Yeah.
And so we've got to change all the ventilation around, so, I mean-
Electrical?
Right, I mean, it's just been shocking what some of these things cost. So that's my hesitation, is I don't know how this board is, how we can vote on something when the price tag is, as you said, it's somewhere in the six-figure, right? Like, I just don't know how we do it.
Yeah, I think the hope would be by the time we sit with Capital, we would have a better sense of what that number is to provide that to them. It might be cost prohibitive based on what we hear back, but I think we felt that we couldn't not at least put it on there as it is a concern from a safety perspective. It's been a concern for a number of years.
Sure. I think the question is whether or not we could potentially replicate the walls that are in the rest of the building or whether current codes would require us to go right up to the ceiling, in which case you're gonna-
Initially, that's what we're finding.
Right, right.
Is that you would have to, what, tie into like the ceiling frames? Exactly. Almost make it a fire partition. Right, okay.
Which then the cost is much higher.
As opposed to just temporary structures.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Well, and, I mean, the other thing that I think would be interesting for us to discuss a little bit is like, how much money do we want to put into a school that we're hoping to replace?
Right.
Again, I wish I had an answer for you because we say that every year when we talk about the middle schools. Well, let's wait one more year, let's wait one more year. And at some point, when do we stop saying, let's wait one more year? Because we have to invest. The roofs are getting passed, you know, as are all the systems there.
So what's your timeframe for the capital meeting?
So this would get submitted to the town manager. They usually pull together all of the department requests and forward it on to Capital Planning, which is, I want to say sometime in January. They go through it, they bring it back to the Select Board, which then they approve it. They come up with the final list in time for, I want to say March for when the warrant for the annual town meeting has to be finalized.
I could say in the past, Dr. Metz has been very good about reaching out to the Chair of this committee or the Finance Sub to ask their opinion on what's been submitted. So I think there's all, if, even if we were to vote the motion as is, there would be a chance to talk to Dr. Metz or the, the Capital Planning Committee. I don't even know, is he still the-
Yes.
Yeah, it would be easy to, to talk to them and to make our, our wishes- Yeah, it would be easy to, to talk to them and to make our, our wishes known if that changes. But I am totally understand everybody wanting the figures, 'cause I mean, even the roof, I mean, that's gotta be a half million, right?
Probably.
I would estimate around there. Wow, I should go in the construction.
But yeah, yeah, I think if, if those are gonna be, those are potentially gonna be your, you know, aside from the boiler replacement and the painting, if those would be like your big dollar figures for going to need that information.
I would also say we have, uh although capital's been very supportive, we've never received all of our requests. We're, we've been fortunate to get the top two, three, four maybe. This year, uh at least one and three are not of a large dollar amount, so, um. But they've also taken things out of order themselves, uh either at the town level or at capital.
Do we use the services of a, of like a consulting engineer to maybe do some of that work for us?
Yeah, which is what we're in the process of doing now for the Glenbrook.
Glenbrook project, great.
Yes, Sue.
Would you ever put an up to amount and then you do as much work as you can up to that amount as opposed to? If you need a number?
Uh, not the approach we would use, I would hate to put a number up to and then find out it's much higher than, um, like as Harmon mentioned, capital planning has been receptive to receiving information as they're going through the process to get as close to a number as possible.
When do you think we would have some better info on the, on the, enclosing the classrooms at Glenbrook? Is that something that we need months for or weeks for?
Weeks, I would say.
So conceivably, the committee could take another look at the list in December if you weren't comfortable.
Would we have enough time for the November twenty-fifth meeting?
Um, no, it's due today.
Oh.
So. I will be sending it.
No time like the present.
I, I'm sure we could always withdraw if we submitted a project and we find out later that it's of a dollar amount that we're not comfortable with, we most certainly could withdraw it during the process.
You than you. She had her hand up first.
I was just wondering, uh, if it's happened in the past that a committee has approved the to-be-determined funding request. Because with the timeframe and all, I mean, that would.
Yeah, we have submitted.
Ideally, what Marty mentioned would work out, but if today's a deadline.
We have submitted projects with a TBD, um, indicator on how much it may cost. And then either were, had conversations with the capital planning committee, assuming it made it through the town manager's list. Um, and talked to them and had some clearer indication as to what the project may cost.
Could you then come back to us with um like information about it, and I mean, at some point, they probably say, we're not gonna do it anyways if it's too expensive, right?
Sure. Or you may decide if you don't feel it's a worthy investment based on the costs, you could withdraw it from consideration.
Okay.
If it's on your list tonight.
Got it.
You most certainly can change this list if we're not comfortable and put it off for a year.
Okay.
While we gather more information.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Jamie.
Yes. So reading the motion, we're just, we're just, we don't care about cost. Am I reading that right? The motion is just talking about the prioritization of this list. So should we be concentrating more on just, do we think number eight should be number one? Or like, I mean, the cost is the cost, we're not, we're not approving this money, it's the select board that's gonna approve it and capital planning.
And town meeting eventually.
'Cause that was my bigger concern looking at the list, my, the one that jumped out at me was number three, and my first question was, can you open the door and get out if there's a fire? 'Cause that should be number one.
That should be number one.
But it's, you can perfectly get out of the doors, that's fine, and that's what we had chatted about in finance sub. I would be more concerned if somebody really, I guess, believes in the group that one of these should maybe be higher or lower based on what was mentioned about Wolf Swamp and Williams. If you, you know, I, I also agree that I don't think we can keep avoiding some of the things on here. But if we think one is higher than the other, I think we should definitely move them around if we think as a group, we should move it. Um, 'cause costs is, I, I guess, I, it's kinda the way I was looking at it, but I completely see your point, Kevin, I mean, it is, those are big numbers probably too, like they're saying. But I'd be, I'm, I'm more concerned about, do we think any of these priorities should be number one? 'Cause number one, two, three, and four are probably what we're gonna get.
Possibly, yes.
If we think that number eight should be one, let's move it, I mean, but, you know, figure that out.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Okay, can you discuss the rest?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the prioritized FY twenty-twenty-one capital projects list dated November twelfth, twenty-nineteen.
Motion's our second.
Second.
Second, open for debate.
So I, I like your point, Jamie, about trying to move the priorities around. And I guess my personal opinion is I, I would not feel great about putting too massive potent, well, not potentially, we know they're gonna be massive toward, to the select board, I just think it makes us look bad. And I would much prefer us to come back in a year when we have numbers to put that up there, that again, is my personal opinion. Um, I would welcome discussion about the order of the other six to make sure we have those in an order that we're all comfortable with.
So which two are you referring to?
The two TBDs, the Glenbrook and the center roof.
Are you suggesting an amendment?
Um, sure.
Floor is yours, Manjul.
Uh, I would like to amend the motion on the table to remove the two items that have a TBD funding amount.
There is a amendment motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second discussion on the amendment. Bronwyn.
Uh, if we do eliminate those, do we bring two more up from the other areas or no?
That would be up to us.
Is eight like a magic number or something, or just?
But you'll, you'll notice the rest of them are TBD.
Everything else is TBD.
Just to give you a little perspective, it's a lot of work to try to get an engineer to get out, to give us a ballpark on, you know, we're not the only department in town that he's doing this for, so it is, um, it is time consuming and unfortunately, this money isn't available until July. So even by then, the information is.
Changes.
Yeah, eighteen months old, by the time we even get out to bid, so.
Wait, is it, and, and I don't, I don't know if I'm revising my whatever, yeah, my amended motion, but, I mean, I like the idea of having those two things as the like next level of priority, so it's like, we need a price for these so that we can vote on them in the future. I, I agree that, that having those pushed down into the massive number of things that are all TBD is, is not, that's not what I'm trying to do.
No, I understand, and Nick, that's why Nick's here, so I think Nick's hearing you.
Okay.
We're taking these off from the capital planning list, but Nick, we want you to at some point in the next three months get us pricing back on those two projects.
Absolutely.
Is that, and, like, there's no rush on you now, I'm, I guess I'm saying, but there is before next year. Like, you guys will have to handle it.
Right.
Alright, so we have the amendment on the floor, any further debate on the amendment?
So that'll move the drainage and parking lot up to number four over at Blueberry, I've never seen this at Blueberry, so I don't know, or I, I don't know. So, um, I would just say that should that, should that be four or three, is everyone good with the?
That's, isn't that a different, like, that's not the motion that we're debating right now, is it?
Well, I mean, it'll have the effect of moving everything up, yes.
Yeah, based on removing those, that's gonna move up to number four, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Automatically.
Yes, we will now have six that we are forwarding on to the capital planning committee.
Yep. So then it's new prioritized list that we're in effect discussing.
Or discussing the amendment to take the two out.
Discussing the amendment.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing not all in favor? Okay, so those two are out, the list has now been reshuffled, so five now becomes four, six becomes five, eight becomes six. Right, yeah. Yep.
I think you can definitely argue that the first one is a safety concern. And that needs to be done, knowing that we've already had an issue with the, with the doors. Um, Jamie, you brought up the issue relative to the fire door and frame, but you were assured that it's, they're, they're functioning, they're just not.
They are.
They're just not in good, they're not in good order, they're not, they're in working order, they're not in good working.
We often have to repair them and make tweaks to them.
Okay.
But there's not a chance we would miss a repair and then they wouldn't work for a fire situation?
Uh, luckily, our staff is pretty attentive to the condition of the doors. And whenever there is an issue, it's brought immediately to our attention and we address it as it is a, a safety concern.
Great.
Um, we're trying to get ahead of the game to avoid what had happened to the set of doors that were placed this summer uh with the warping, 'cause we know uh the condition of those doors is they are on an aluminum frame. And likely, what happened to the doors that were placed this summer will happen to the doors that we have installed everywhere else.
Okay, thank you.
And then the boiler replacement, you said multiple repairs have been made to this one already?
For years.
For years.
Yes.
And that can pose any number of safety concerns potentially?
Without a doubt. It leaks now when we have to rely on it to draw heat.
Right. I, I mean, I've seen the drainage issue at Blueberry, it is a concern, definitely a concern. I'm just gonna say from my standpoint, I'm comfortable with the order that we currently have.
Anybody else? Then I will call for a vote, all in favor of the motion as amended? Yes. Thanks, Nick.
Alright, thank you, great to see you.
See ya.
Mr. Capitasto.
Mike Capitasto, our athletic director, here tonight, uh only because our girls' field hockey uh match was post-hall. Hopefully better weather at some point. Uh, annually, Mike comes to us with a, a report on um athletic department finances and uh he's given you a number of documents that he and Mr. Mazza work closely on, uh kinda representing the, uh, the costs and the revenue associated with running a very extensive uh athle- and successful uh athletic program. Uh, but over eighty percent of our students participate in uh one athletic sport or another, and so our participation rates are probably the highest that, that I'm aware of anyways, uh certainly in, in the Western Mass area. And so we got a program to be proud of, it keeps uh thousands of students occupied and busy and engaged uh in, in healthy activities after school, so um, we appreciate the chance to overro- overview for you, uh the finances of the athletic department, so.
Alright, thanks for having me tonight. Um, uh, the, the field hockey game was just rescheduled to Thursday at seven o'clock at Shrewsbury High School, so. If anybody wants to go out there.
You should give us an update on, on all of the playoff sports that are going on.
Yeah, I can, I can give that out, I sent an email out to Alert Now, but I will definitely give you one. Uh, boys soccer is playing tomorrow, five o'clock at Central High School in the Western Mass semifinals, they're still in the sectional semifinals. Uh, boys cross country, uh qualified as a team for first time in a long time to uh Division One state championships uh this Saturday. One o'clock at Gardner Municipal Golf Course. Um, football still has two football home games left, uh one in this Friday versus Northampton and East, uh Thanksgiving, Eastlawn Meadow at ten AM. Um, if boys soccer or field hockey win, obviously they'll move on um to Laia probably Saturday or Sunday. Um, boys, boys soccer still has quite a ways to go, 'cause we're still in the sectionals, but uh field hockey, they're when they would move on to the state finals. So that's kinda what we still have going on, winter registrations are, are up and going. Uh, that's right around the corner, about two weeks, two weeks away from that, so uh um, that's still, still going on. Um, so uh like I did with the subfinance, um, I, I, I'm on the athletic budget sheet uh that has a, a breakdown, a total of um, the overall uh department spending. And it kinda just, again, it, it, we have one for every sport broken down like this as well. Um, but this is just the overview of each sport and, and how much it costs, and there's, there's subsheets to the bottom of this. Uh, the front page is just the uh uh total expenses and um for, for all this, all of our twenty-twenty-nine sports, varsity sports program, that doesn't even include um subvarsity programs, uh, uh, most of those programs have JV. We still have some freshman programs hanging on, um even though uh those are becoming fewer uh across the uh region. So, um, you know, total equipment, uh ice time, ski passes, entry fees, i- it's about ninety-seven thousand dollars uh uh for all of our programs. Um, transportation.
Mike, I can just stop you, so the sheet you're referring to now, we might have a different order than you. So the, the sheet that Mike's referring to now, it's titled Budget Package Fiscal Year Twenty-eighteen dash Twenty-nineteen, is that the one you're on?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody's caught up to where you were on that, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, transportation last year, uh, was a little over eighty thousand dollars, um, um, uh, home game services, which is officials, contest management, site supervisors, ticket takers. Um, for, for all of our programs, it was about seventy-four, about almost seventy-five thousand dollars. Coaching salaries, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and you'll see in the transportation, home game service and coaching salaries, um, you know, a lot of that has to do with postseason play. You know, we, we have so, we have some very successful uh sports here and they move on and obviously uh transportation goes up, cont- officials go up and, and contest management goes up as well as coaching salaries, we do pay uh ten percent um uh of their salary up to three, three weeks of postseason pay. So I think last year would we spend uh thirty, thirty-four thousand dollars in, in coaching salaries just for postseason play? So that is um that's part of the two hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, memberships and dues, um, um, we have to pay district dues uh to the PVIAC uh which is a little over five thousand dollars, uh depending on what sport you have and subvarsity sports, and then we also have to pay uh the MIAA yearly dues, uh which is a little under five thousand dollars. Again, depending on sports and uh subvarsity uh sports. Um, hockey also pays a due, 'cause we're part of the big nine, which is really only six schools left, but uh uh they pay dues that. That's what it started and we never changed it, but uh, yeah, that's uh, you know, we pay a dues uh to, to one person and they take care of the ice time at the Olympia, including the uh, uh, police officers, ticket takers, any site supervisors uh that they may need. Um, and then insurance, impacts, uh athletic training, um, services, any miscellaneous items that um a lot of our sports uh use, like the porta-potties out at Russell Turner uh tennis courts and things like that. The insurance, uh we do pay uh twenty thousand dollars in supplemental insurance, above and beyond cata- catastrophic, that uh out of the athletic budget, so that's a big chunk of that change. So in total, it's, is roughly about five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of uh total expenses last year. And then revenue that we brought in, um uh from user fees, three hundred and about three hundred and four thousand dollars, gate receipts um and season passes and donations was right about thirty thousand dollars. And then, um, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the uh general fund. Uh, which again, left us with a deficit, um but we, we were well aware of, of that going into, into that. And last year, we had um one thousand one hundred and sixty-three total participants within the athletic program for the year. Um, and seven hundred and seventy-five student athletes participated in at least one sport on the year, which is you know, roughly about eighty percent, which is the highest around here and, and one of the highestes in the state, which is uh very nice to see. Um, and then, like you said, it breaks it down into the subsheets. Um, any questions on this sheet that you might have? Any questions on this sheet that you might have or questions?
Do you want us to hold questions or just go for it?
Fire away.
Alright, as you know, I always have questions. So Mike, this is really useful. As somebody, I mean, many of us are new to the committee. What are, like the fifty thousand dollar deficit seems strange to me. Are there trends? Like, how have we done the last five years? Is that going up? Is it going down?
Yeah, I think it fluctuates year to year. We've always run a deficit.
Which again seems strange to me.
Well, the amount, the amount that the school committee has been applying or setting aside in the general fund budget for athletics has been increasing. So about three or four years ago was seventy-five thousand, and we went up to a hundred and fifty, and now we're at one eighty. Mike and Tom have come down and advocated for years that there needs to be an increase. Because prior to the hundred and eighty thousand, the deficits were much higher. So even though there's a deficit, we don't allow the revolving count to end the fiscal year in a depth with a negative balance. So really, the amount from the general fund was approximately two thirty.
Right, okay, I mean, that's how I would read that, right, yeah.
With one exception though. Michael, in terms of the financials, is reporting it basically on a accrual basis. So he's accounting for revenue that came in after July first against this fiscal year. Immunus, if it doesn't come in until after, it gets reported in the year we received it. So the deficit on the, on the books was not as high as what is listed in terms of what he's reporting here. In terms of how much we actually had to pick up in the general fund. So yes, has there been a deficit? Yes. I would say some of it has to do with, with the information that Michael has brought forward is Long Meadow. We probably budget the least amount in the general fund towards the athletic program. Most cover the cost of athletic salaries.
Of all the.
For all of the athletics, which would probably put us around two hundred and forty-five thousand instead of the one eighty or even the two thirty we end up covering this year, which would put us in line with a number of other surrounding communities. Some are even higher than that, three fifty to five hundred thousand dollars. So I would say, yes, our trend has been a negative amount, but the general fund has picked it up every year.
Kevin, go ahead Marty.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say that, you know, the pressures on transportation and fair to say that gate receipts have declined somewhat in recent years as well, so.
Triple E didn't help.
Yeah.
That's on next year's.
Deficit's getting bigger, that's what I'm saying.
Thanksgiving Day is a big impact because I can bring in, it has brought in fifteen to eighteen thousand at the gate in the past. The numbers have been declining, and it's in every other year. So some years, our deficit goes up because we don't host Thanksgiving. The following year, it goes down because we had an influx that year. So there are a number of variables.
So I guess, I'm just, what's your surprise? I guess just.
I just am surprised that we, like, we were like, oh, we always run a deficit. Like, I, that's not normal. I mean, I know we're not running deficit because we're paying for it.
So it's not a normal, like, line item budget that people are used to? Because we're relying on user fees, so, you know, to help supplement that. And I want to say last year, you know, our cross-country numbers came down. You know, the year before, we were probably, you know, close to seventy-five boys cross, you know, runners and about sixty-five girls. I mean, and that, that was high for a few years and I think we're back down to our normal numbers of about fifty. So you're talking, you know, twenty-five just on the boy's side at a hundred and, and we, and we reduced the user fee from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and twenty-five dollars last year. So now you're talking, plus another twenty on the girl's side. There's forty-five people that you didn't have the year before, so it fluctuates year to year. It's not your, and that goes in every sport.
I was just trying to clarify, were you like surprised that user fees didn't cover the expenses?
No, I, I know that users fees don't cover, but that's my second question, which is like, what is the trend of the user fees, right? I mean, as a parent, I just pay them, but I, again, like, I don't, I don't remember.
I got the notice to pay for winter today.
Right, I don't remember. Do they go up? Do they go down? Have they been the same for twenty years? I mean, I just, that would be helpful.
I think last year was the first year the school committee reduced user fees.
Some user fees.
Some.
We reduced it for approximately eight sports, from one fifty to one twenty-five. The rationale was on the other report that is in your package, that the sports that we looked at.
Some sports are paying for other sports.
The perception would be that sports were supporting financially other sports.
Right.
That happens in every academic athletic program.
Everybody supports football.
Michael, Michael and I were tasked with looking at a way to make it more manageable where we have a high number of participants and for those sports where there seem to be a consistent black or in the positive financial each year. Prior to last year's action, the last change in user fees was probably about ten or twelve years ago where we increased hockey from three fifty to six hundred.
Right.
Again, based on the cost of that program.
Is the booster stuff club still paying half on that?
They have struggled recently. I think that they stopped, we kind of put an X to that. My third year, they were struggling to raise fifteen thousand dollars extra to.
Okay, because I remember that was part of the big debate when we went for the six hundred bucks, which is still fairly reasonable considering compared to Eastern Mass.
Yes.
The one question I had.
I mean, can I just want to add one more piece? The other piece we also noticed is we do have the highest user fees around in Western Mass. Compared to all surrounding communities, our fees on a sport by sport basis are higher than any other community. So even though we haven't raised them, we also are exceeding what other communities charge. So that's kind of gone into our consideration of not necessarily increasing the rates.
Okay.
Part of that, again, postseason, postseason really puts a hit on the budget, which is good and bad. It's great to have some successful programs, but you're probably talking about fifty to sixty thousand dollars extra a year with transportation, coaching salaries and contest management in postseason.
So what happens when I go to a postseason soccer game and I pay money to Central or I pay at Westfield State?
It goes to the MIAA.
So we don't get any of that money back? So the gate at postseason is, we'd never see that?
Unless it's our home game, and it depends what round it is and depends what sport it is. But when you go to, if you're going to Central tomorrow, that's going directly to the MIAA.
And we don't ever get that money back for anything?
The only thing they've done in the last couple of years is they have not raised our dues.
Indirectly you get it back. If you like the service that the MIAA provides, indirectly you receive that back as a member district, I suppose.
Because there's other programs that could contribute. One question I had that stuck out to me, Michael, was the girls' ice hockey. At seven thousand dollars per participant, how does that work?
So, so girls' ice hockey is a co-op. We happen to be the host school, so right now there's eleven schools in the co-op. And how we have negotiated the contract was whatever percentage of the roster you have after two weeks, that's the percentage of the total budget you will, you will pay at the end of the year, so.
So the six participants are Long Meadow participants, the total budget's the co-op budget?
Correct, so and that's why.
And then you look at the revenue in the next column, they're paying the cost.
So I mean, we do, you know, we, out of our own pocket, we are probably, what are we paying? About six thousand dollars out of our own pocket.
That makes sense.
You know, once, once all the user fees are paid from the other surrounding towns, so yeah.
And that's one of the sports in the black? Right, it is.
So we don't, we don't charge direct ice time for hockey, like, it not, it's not based on like ice time per player?
No.
It's just a fee?
Yeah, it's just a fee, it's a flat fee, six hundred dollars. And then, and then, yeah, whatever. Ice time is, is tough to come by, so it's whatever we can get.
What you can negotiate, yeah.
Yeah, and negotiate, you know, like our girls' program is strictly out of Mass Mutual. And, but that is the only ice time we can get and we only go three, three practices a week. Sometimes we get a fourth sheet, a fourth sheet a week, but that's, and you're talking fifty minutes. So they're really only practicing, you know, three times a week for fifty minutes. But again, it's all is what we can, what we can work out.
Any other questions for Mike?
The one thing I've always been curious about is like, what sports don't we have? Like, I know we worked really hard to add boys volleyball, right? Are there other sports that we don't have?
Yep, from the, so we are around here, we are the, one of the biggest sports programs around. I think there's four of the schools that have the same amount of sports programs we have. We do not have Nordic Ski, we do not have Boys and Girls Rugby, we do not have Gymnastics. And I think that that might be it. I mean, we're close to maxed out and we do send out a survey every year. You know, we run a Title IX audit every year and we send out a survey to our student body and see what their interests are and, and kind of make a, you know, a call from there, you know, with some interest obviously, you know, from, from the student body.
I just have one quick question, because I didn't ask it in the finance sub. Have we always done the, the postseason extra pay? Is that something new as well?
No, that's been around, that's, that was here long before I was, right?
Yeah, it was before Michael started, but I'd say it's probably about ten or twelve years it's, was added.
And that hasn't changed, the percentage?
No, it does not.
It is where it was, it's been that way for that long?
I would recognize this.
No, I negotiated this with Michael Deary. I remember adding it, sitting across the table from him discussing the benefits of.
So it's in our, in our collective bargaining agreements?
Yeah.
So it goes back that long within the collective body, okay? I was just wondering, I just, I meant to ask it at the sub.
Yeah, not, not many schools have it. There's probably about six or seven schools locally that do have it. And it's, part of it is to, you know, be competitive when you're looking for coaches.
Got it. If you make a long postseason run, you're, you're at it for a couple, two, three more weeks.
Yep, and then, then your salaries, you know, look comparable across the state, you know, once you start to add that postseason play.
Any other questions? Thank you, this was great.
And then, so yeah, we, they are up on the website, on the athletics website. We have the last, on the homepage of the athletic budgets. We have all the way back to, I believe, two thousand twelve and thirteen, and we will add this one on there tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You don't even post or anything, right?
No, it's just information on, like Michael said, it'll get posted to the high school athletic page.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
No written report, but a couple of things. Happy to attend the conference with the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents last week. I appreciate the committee's support of my participation. Some great sessions that certainly will help out going forward, particularly around NIOSC work, equity and diversity. And even around strategic planning, so I was happy to participate. A couple of other things, Sue and I are working on the proposal to the Department of Education to participate in their kaleidoscope pilot program. And it's a pilot program to support districts that are interested in deeper learning initiatives. So we hope to have a report to you at some point, maybe at your December meeting. School principals and I are working closely on the development of school improvement plans. And those are largely put together by school councils, so we appreciate the involvement of teachers and parents at each of our six schools. Tax ceiling task force is Thursday evening and tomorrow is Wear Your Cardigan to Work Day because it's World Kindness Day, so if you have a cardigan in the closet in honor of Mr. Rogers, dig it out and put it on. And that's it.
Awesome, thank you. So I was at the, the MAS SMSC conference with Marty. I think the biggest things that I took away from there was there was a great conversation around absence, which we took a hit on for the, the accountability standards for the state. There were some good things that was coming out of there, just about how they track, how some of the things that they track affect Long Meadow potentially differently when you have a student who may be on like an Olympic development soccer team or traveling down south with, you know, horse jumping in the wintertime, peculiar things. But even if they miss ten percent, they're still going to be counted as absent for us, which is going to hit our attendance numbers pretty hard. And then also how the lowest performer list hits us as well and how we should be targeting that to, and I know Marty and the principals are already all over this, but it was good to get a good understanding and grounding about that. The Safe Roots team was there. They were talking to me about, you know, they have free assessment for dismissal and arrival procedures. And so some other stuff that I know Sergeant Mesaferro has already taken advantage of in town. He was very well-known to the Safe Roots team at the conference. But they did offer that if there was anything else we could do, they'd be more than happy to come and help. And Marty and I had a conversation and we would hope that we would bring in Carl at some time in the future, like we did at Blueberry for the candidates day last year, which I thought was really, really good. And hopefully that would be just as good for everybody to see in the, the whole district on, or they can on TV. The next thing I went to was the train presentation, train as in the, the energy company train, T R A N E. They did a large presentation about, they were, they had a district which had two aging schools, middle schools to be exact. And that they came in, they did a whole assessment of what they could do for those. And without going through MAS, the Mass School Building Authority, the savings from the project that they built actually paid for the, paid for the, the project. So the savings from energy, from the improvements they made. Basically what they said is they would come and do a free assessment of all of the facilities in town, give us a report card back. You know, I had a conversation with Marty again, and you know, this is, and then I had called Kevin as well. We have our Energy and Sustainability Committee. I think this would be a great place at least for them to explore the initial information that we got because this is more of a town issue than just a Long Meadow issue. The other thing that the district did was put in a forty-eight car, carport in the parking lot. And if you look at their parking lot, their parking lot's significantly smaller than ours, that was all they could do. You know, I thought that was pretty good potential for, you know, what could we do if we would decide we wanted to do carports out? And they answer all kinds of questions about, you know, snow and plows and kids hitting them and they haven't had any of those issues, but that was a great one. Went to one on student private, student Davis, student data privacy agreements and how all the districts now are starting to use the same type of apps on the web, but teachers aren't always going to IT to get those approved. And so there's an organization out there that gets them all approved, gets the privacy arrangements in place. And then all the districts can go out there and use approved apps, knowing that they're not going to the system. And most of the major ones are out there like Class Dojo, iXL, all the other stuff I see my kids bringing home. And it was funny, there was one gentleman who could not get, understand the term Kahoot. So we, it was referred to as Kahuna and Kalua numerous times, but it was, that was good. So I forwarded that to Nick George. And then the last thing was the MASC rep for our region sat next to me at lunchtime. I extended to her that we would like to remain engaged with the MASC. We're a member, we've paid our dues and that we would appreciate any assistance they could give us. There are many, many issues pertinent to Western Mass that don't affect everybody at that, at that gathering. And that I think that the Western Mass, and she was the Western Mass representative, really needs to start engaging more with us. And I reached out and told her I would, would love it if she would engage more with, with our district on those issues that are more germane to the western part of the state, like the tax ceiling, transportation, you know, rural districts. ceiling, transportation, you know, rural districts. And oh, I forgot, the biggest thing on that train thing that I really thought was interesting was they started talking about using biomass boilers in schools because there is money back from the state, big money back from the state on the use of biomass boilers in the in the the districts, so. That that was, that's all I have. Hey, Armin.
Hello. So decisions for students who apply to the National Honor Society were released two weeks ago and we had an induction ceremony in the auditorium where about eighty juniors and seniors were inducted last Thursday. I had some updates on our sports teams, which Mr. Capitaster already covered. So we received a lot of suggestions over the past two weeks about our ice blocks, which are basically our study halls, and that more rooms should be open where talking is allowed. And I looked into it, there are already one, one or two of those rooms, but they're usually full, so I think that more rooms could possibly like encourage collaboration on group projects and that sort of thing, so I think as a council we'll look into seeing if there's a need for more of those rooms.
Any questions for me? Senior possibly up there?
Oh, it's November twenty-first to the twenty-third.
Go check it out, Back to the Eighties.
Back to the Eighties.
Give them a piece of the music every day. All right, anybody else? Thank you. Next, LPVEC, that'd be you, Brown.
I think Marty sent an email out to us about this, but just to let everybody else know, the executive director of the LPVEC, Andy Churchill, he's been there for about five years, he's done a great job. He decided to take a job with the state and his office frequently he'll be working out of the Collab building in West Springfield, but he'll no longer be the executive director as of, I believe, January fifteenth, something like that, just wanted to let everyone know. And they're looking at hiring someone for July first.
Yeah, he's what going to become the DESI area director or something like that?
Yeah, along those lines, they have embedded support centers at collaboratives across the state and so he'll be heading up the support center that's located up up Brashell, so.
Nice.
Yeah. We told him we went to the dark side, but it's a good, it's a good fit for him.
Yeah.
Is that it? Nice. Sustainability committee?
Yes, I went to the first meeting that I was invited to and I, we didn't vote on me being the rep, so I hope everybody's okay with going to those meetings.
We didn't, but you're so good at it.
I went to one meeting. So they they are actually meeting right now, which is kind of ironic, but anyway. At the meeting, we talked about a bunch of stuff and and some of it was definitely relevant to the work that we do and and that's what I wanted to share because they, there was a town energy audit and so a lot of the stuff that came up relates to the schools, not surprisingly. And so that's one of the things I want to try and keep our committee up to date on because that was one of the things we didn't get to at the last meeting that they're probably talking about now, which is sort of prioritizing what they want to do. And one of the big things is similar to what you just brought up, Armin, about trying to, you know, do energy efficiency in the schools and again, not surprisingly, the two that are least energy efficient are the two middle schools. And does it make sense to do that based on our timeframe and all that stuff? And I think the, what I was hoping to get and we didn't have time to get to all of it was, you know, what would be the the payback time on some of those investments? And we also talked about solar and there was a representative from the green communities there and and there's money that Long Meadow is eligible for because we're now part of the green communities and the green communities said that until you get all the energy efficiency work done, they won't give you any money for solar because you get a quicker payback on the energy efficiency work than you do on putting solar in, which isn't to say we couldn't decide to put solar in without using their money. But anyway, so I think there's a lot of the stuff that that you mentioned that similar things they're talking about. I'll definitely bring the idea of calling train, you know, and getting them as part of the mix to the group next time that we're there. One idea that I have that I I want to see what you guys think and I I think I emailed Marty on this and I'm I'm trying to talk to Tom Lanners about it is I think there's a lot of opportunity for some of these things that are sort of brewing on this committee to become projects for our high school students. I I think there's a really nice overlap between the stuff we've been talking about, deeper learning, different ways to measure success, a lot of the stuff they're working on, I just think that if there were a small group of students who are excited about various projects, they could make some real headway on this where I just don't think the folks on the committee have the time to do all of the stuff they want to do, right? Just some of the things, so clearly they're talking about the gas pipeline, I'm sure there'd be kids who'd be interested in that. One that I thought was really interesting is we were talking about streetlights, could be really interesting if there were some kids who are interested in astronomy, wanted to look into, like are the new streetlights we're going to get consistent with having dark skies so that you could actually look and see more stars than you can right now with the streetlights we have? Never mind all the things that come up with solar, you know, how can we get charging stations? And again, I know that's something that's sort of bubbling around in the community, but if we could get high school kids involved in doing that, I think it would be a win for everybody. So anyway, that's what's going on.
So I'd say basically as the chair, I have the power to create an ad hoc committee, so I guess we would treat this as an ad hoc committee. The chair would also propose that Kevin be the representative to this ad hoc committee with the consent of the school committee. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
What is this?
You're on the Energy and Sustainability.
Okay, I didn't, I mean, I feel like that's not an ad hoc, like that is a committee of the town, isn't it?
I believe it is.
It's a.
Good chair for the point.
But from a school committee perspective, you are now the head of the Energy and Sustainability.
Excellent.
And as such, that position is recordable to the Energy and Sustainability. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, don't tell them that. Okay, thank you.
There you go. Because I don't think they have any official like voting power within town, they're an advisory.
I think they recommend.
Yeah, they're an advisory committee to the select board.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're the advisory committee to the school committee to the select board.
The liaison.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you.
No problem. Anything else? All right, looks like we have a building use request. Is there a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the facility use request from the National MS Society to use the Long Meadow High School cafeteria on May third, two thousand and twenty.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Set motion and second, any discussion? See none, call for vote, all in favor? Some budget transfers, is there a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the budget revision as outlined in the document titled FY twenty Grants and Special Revenues Amendment Number One, dated November fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion, second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mazur or Mr. Hinch?
So the grants and special revenues primarily we're recognizing the award amounts for our grant for FY twenty and we develop the budget, we make assumptions on how much we'll receive for the various funds, whether it be federal or state. So tonight what you're doing is recognizing the actual award amount. Would draw your attention to the back, page two of this transfer, the circuit breaker amount, which we are recommending could be reduced by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Again, that is a reflection of the reduction in how much we're spending on out of district tuitions. So we receive funds from the state for special education costs that exceed a certain dollar amount and so the number came in much lower than I anticipated for FY twenty and it may go down again in FY twenty-one, so. And then the next, the school choice transfers, if you recall, I think last meeting and the meeting before you approved the textbook purchase for the high school, so this is now budgeting that twenty-one thousand dollars that you approved. And then there is a request to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the high school NIASC accreditation that will be taking place over the course over the next two or three years, so hopefully this is, it's an estimate, it's based on what we, what other communities spend and it's a ballpark depending upon where people travel from and how long they're here for and so a request for twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for those expenses over the course of the next couple fiscal years. So the total is a reduction on special revenues of forty-four thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second, there's Mr. Maz's explanation, is there any further discussion? See none, a call for vote on the first motion, all in favor? There's a second motion?
Move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the budget transfer as outlined in the document titled FY twenty General Fund Budget Transfer Number One, dated November fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor? Student activity accounts, there's a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee authorized the student activity subaccounts as listed on the Long Meadow Student Activity Subaccount Authorization List updated eleven-four, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Call for a vote? All in favor? Nice. Pause the sub, did not meet, eval sub, anybody can speak to that?
Yes, eval sub met last week, just as a check in and Dr. O'Shea provided us with an update on his annual improvement plan, so we kind of went through it with him and he kind of gave us in relation to his action steps, like where he was with each one. And it was an excellent update, which we appreciate him taking the time to do and seems like he's right on task for things.
So in your packet, there's a sort of color coded version of the plan and it's green, yellow, red, green meaning it's really out of the gate, up and running, yellow means it's early stages, red means it's sort of not started yet, but there is a plan for it to be started, so. If you have any questions on any of those, I'm happy to chat with anybody at any time.
Okay.
Can I just ask you a question on that?
Yes, no problem.
Marty, I guess I'm just curious, as you know, you reflect on that, are you happy with what the plan looks like right now or do you feel like some of the things that are red are things that, you know, you you don't actually want to do because priorities have changed or things like that?
No, I don't think any priorities have changed and even the the red items, there there's sort of a plan to get it out of the gate. There is, there's some goals relating to equity and diversity and the establishment of a sort of a steering committee. I have, I've shared some of my reflections on that with the evaluation subcommittee and actually spent some time at the MASC conference, talking with other district leaders about how that looks in other districts and so I have some ideas on how I want to kind of get that out of the gate, but you know, I think really creating that systemic commitment to equity and diversity and is is really important and we've done some work in that area in recent years, but I think it's really time to let it sort of take root and gather some sort of permanent direction, I think, so. So that that's, that's one area that I think we'll, I'll continue to update the evaluation subcommittee on and I think the plan is probably somewhere around January to do a sort of a mid-cycle review.
Any further questions? Great. No ongoing business, new business. Enclosed, you'll find the letter that the select board sent to Congressman Richard Neal regarding the Tennessee Gas Metering Station proposed for the property on Long Meadow Country Club. Also included are the minutes from the select board meeting when the metering station was discussed and the letter sent to Columbia Gas after that meeting. So I have included a motion in the, in our packet in support of the letter from the select board to Congressman Neal, which I think plays to the school committee's responsibility of safety for children without exceeding our authority into areas which are by the the town, by the safety officers, by the the people who own the buildings in town and puts the safety onus on the children, which I believe is definitely within our purview. So open for discussion or I will entertain a motion?
I move that the Long Meadow School Committee endorse the action of the Long Meadow Select Board in sending a letter to Congressman Neal in regard to the proposed Tennessee Gas Pipeline Metering Station. The school committee is committed to a safe environment for learning and agrees that the location of the station would have been better cited in a non-residential open space area specifically away from any school in our town.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, is there a discussion? Or amendments, whatever.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go, no, I'm.
I I'm just curious, like, does this mean that we are going to send our own letter or are we going to just say to Congressman Neal, we support what the select, I just, I'm curious what we do?
Well, I would say we could do this and then if the board authorizes me, I would send a letter. So I'll give you an example, recently we did the same thing with, what did we do?
Two and a half.
Oh, yeah, with the with the chapter seventy and the Student Opportunity Act. We sent the letter to our representatives and then the select board sent the letter to the representatives supporting our position. So I would say I would be looking for the board to authorize me to sign a letter in support of the select board's position.
Okay.
Should we amend the?
I would say we would vote this first and then we agreed to that because I don't even think we need, all I think we would need is consensus on that as opposed to a motion, correct Diane?
Because really what we're doing here is endorsing the action of the select board.
Right, and then I would just be sending a letter saying, we support the actions of the select board, yes. Any other? Yes, Brown?
I just had a question in the letter and I read about this in the newspaper instead of the news as well. It says that, you know, the Mass Department of Public Utilities recently issued a moratorium on Columbia Gas's work on distribution system. So how does that, I don't, I'm not sure if anyone knows this or not, impact this project? I mean, if if they're the ones that are going to be working on it, but the state has issued a moratorium on them because of some of their past work, how does that?
I think they make, well, they're making the argument and that Tennessee Gas Pipeline is is doing this so that Columbia Gas can manage it, but the, and and so the way they're getting around doing the work, that's, that's what it sounds like to me, is that Tennessee Gas is making this happen so that Columbia can operate it. That's how I read it, so there's, right now, there's no, there's nothing stopping Tennessee Gas.
Right.
From doing the work, but then Columbia can't, according to the moratorium, Columbia can't actually do anything in terms of operating the station.
And as the select board said at, at town meeting, they have retained experts and lawyers to address this, which would be, I mean, I don't think we have the authority to speak on moratoriums or pipelines or whatever else. Like I said, I would say we should stick to the safety of the students as our concern and and what we have responsibility and authority over.
I fully support the select board's standpoints and their, because yes, our, our kids and our, our kids are the primary issue here.
Any other further comments, considering?
Will we find out, I saw that Chief, or the, was it Chief Dearborn sent a letter Or maybe it was a second letter from?
Chief Dearborn?
Yeah, I thought.
It was about the reporting.
Right.
I think he had helped draft the, the reporting requirement parameters that are under there and the, one of the things that's, it's of interest and might ultimately involve us is a number five on the, the letter to Congressman Neal on the second page where the select board indicated they, they were hopeful that there would be host agreements that cover the cost of emergency management, so that's something that if there were those types of agreements and and there were new emergency management plans, we would be working directly with public safety on those, on the development of those plans, so.
Great, thanks.
Anything else?
So I mean, I guess the, a couple of things I'd like to say before we we vote are, the first is that, you know, many of the parents from Wolf Swamp have expressed their concerns of safety. I totally hear and get you and understand where you're coming from and that's why the school committee is is taking a stance.
school committee is, is taking a stance in regards to the actions of the select board. You know, our, our scope is limited to the safety. We aren't in charge of the infrastructure for the town, so to the point that we can talk about safety, we will and we will always demand the, the highest safety standards for, for our children. I would also ask that those groups out there who are coming to us in the interest of safety actually put on their website that they're doing this for safety. If you look at the website for Pipeline Awareness New England, safety isn't even on the first page. So I'm here with the best interest of our kids at heart for safety, not about overbuilding infrastructure. It's about safety. It's about protecting our children and that's where the priority should lie. So that being said, call for the vote, all in favor? Passed. So I'll create the letter and then we'll send it to Congressman Neal. Next, we have, we have in your packet, the recommended responsibilities of a curriculum subcommittee with one, two, three, four, five bullets on the curriculum subcommittee, a committee to make recommendations to the full school, full school committee on curriculum changes and textbook adoptions based upon administrative reports and recommendations. As necessary, develop and recommend curriculum-related district goals to the full school committee. Review and make recommendations to the full school committee on existing or proposed curriculum-related policies based on administrative recommendations. Review administrative reports on district achievement and accountability data as they relate to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And review the impact of budgetary allocations and changes on curriculum and instruction. This came out of conversations between myself, Bronwyn, Dr. O'Shea, in regards to questions that were coming from the, the public, you know, parents about the availability of certain classes at the high school during certain times or during, during years, specifically, you know, honors classes versus just regs and AP. And so Dr. O'Shea and Bronwyn had suggested that we create a curriculum subcommittee to just take a look at that, an issue, but not in a tunnel, but as a broader curriculum, having a broader curriculum eye from the school committee. My concerns were that we would overstep our bounds and get too much into the operational day-to-day. Dr. O'Shea and I had a healthy discussion about that and, and I think we all have the best interest to try and come up with some kind of curriculum subcommittee that, that looks at policy that influences curriculum as opposed to being an operational committee. Did I capture that for you guys?
I'd say so.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. I think it's a, it's a potentially a sort of a healthy landing spot for curriculum-related questions and, and I think the way Armin described it made sense to, to think about those questions broadly, you know, with input from the administrators. So, you know, I think one of the things that's worked well is with policy sub, we've, we've brought in the administrators that are kind of managing those policies on a day-to-day basis and getting feedback from them directly. And so potentially this could be structured the same way, sort of if there's curriculum questions or if there's maybe a, an initial review of textbook series that we're looking to adopt, this could be the place to have that conversation and we can bring in the administrators and, and kind of get some of the important questions, the, the lower, the lower level questions answered fairly easily and then bring, that committee could then bring those recommendations to this full committee for consideration. So I think it's, it's, my guess is it's more common than not for districts to have a curriculum subcommittee. And as Armin said, it really fits with the responsibilities and jurisdiction of a committee relating to policy, budget, and major curriculum adoptions.
So I guess first question, are we okay with the creation of a ad hoc subcommittee? We wouldn't make it permanent? See how it runs for a bit and then?
Do we have something written down of like what the actual purview is, like how narrow the focus or big it is in our packet?
Hmm.
Good to see it, sorry.
Sorry.
I'll go take a look at that. So, so with regards, so, so anything that is listed in here, they're able to go and if there's anything that's outside of the, I'm going to find it here in a second.
Keep going, there you go.
Sorry. I will read it while you guys discuss, one second.
Yes, Bronwyn.
I was just going to mention, I think the most important part is that, as Dr. O'Shea mentioned, as with the other committees, anything that whoever's on the, this committee, you know, talks about or makes recommendations about, everything will be brought to the full committee. So I just think that's important for, for people to understand that it's something, you know, make recommendations to the full, full school committee, just review and make recommendations, you know. I don't think it's going to be, you know, operational as, as Armin said. I think that these bullets here make it pretty clear. I think.
So the one question I would have, just so I understand, does your policy in this curriculum subcommittee, I don't know, I read this and I don't see much of a, a line there, so you're going to, are we going to be defining how, like the, what amount of certain types of classes that students are allowed to take within this or is this just strictly curriculum textbooks, how it's assessed, how it's instructed? Or kid walks in, he's a junior and says, I'm going to take 10 AP classes, you know, and, or, because in here, it basically says that you might be able to have some, or does that go back to policy within here? Is, is there any policy around that or do we just leave that up to the students?
No, that's, that's operational policy, I mean, that's, you work with you.
We're not going to get involved in that at all.
No, no, this is, this is district-wide goal, the district-wide goal-based.
Okay.
I mean, the kids, children would come down to their guidance counselors and their recommendations and there's a whole process about appealing and having your parents sign it and opting in and so, yeah.
Okay. So it's all just going to be strictly the pure curriculum, not got, not, you know, floating into any other areas like that?
So as an example, you have many policies in your policy manual that are curriculum-related. So you have policies on, let's say, drug prevention curriculum, that there be in place a K-12 drug awareness and prevention curriculum, or that there be in place a, some, some curriculum-related anti-bullying curriculum, right? So those are, those are policy issues, they're, they're in your policy manual, but they're, but they're curriculum in nature, so. And then, but then there might be other times where we have a significant curriculum adoption that we're looking to make and we want to kind of have it initially reviewed by the curriculum subcommittee. So it could be, if it's a major textbook adoption, it's going to require a significant amount of, of money, it's, or it's, or it's a shift in our approach, we might bring it to this curriculum subcommittee for initial vetting. But as Bronwyn said, ultimately it makes its way to the full committee.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, and I can remember, like, the first time I was on school committee, it was, two, two things hit us, were the health curriculum
Yeah.
and the music curriculum back in the, the string program back in fourth and fifth grades. And we didn't have a curriculum subcommittee back then, so, you know, you would have 200 music parents show up at the school committee meeting to force a curriculum conversation that could have been held and then brought to the full committee without, you know, making them feel like that was their only avenue. Like, I think it gives parents someplace else to go to express their concerns and their, you know, how we can work together to, to make change.
Okay. No, I'm good, because in, in, so in essence, this, this group, like, for example, the history textbooks, they would have went to this group before they came to the finance subcommittee, I mean, or completely bypassed the finance subcommittee and just come directly from the curriculum to here is kind of the process, is what we're thinking?
If we felt it was a, it had major curriculum implications and, you know, and, and made sense to bring it to that curriculum sub, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That's not to say that that would always have to happen, because sometimes there's things that are so straightforward, they can sort of come straight to this committee without that initial vetting, probably.
All right. Yes, Kevin?
How many people are we saying would be on this?
That's where we're going next.
Oh, okay.
So, so we're consenting, right, on the idea? Is anybody opposed? So I guess I would question, how many people do we want on side committee? I mean, I would nominate Bronwyn or, well, as the chair, because it's a committee, the chair has to appoint and then you guys have to agree or consent. So I would say at least Bronwyn needs to be there.
I was wondering if we should wait for Ryan and Gianna to be here?
I thought we were going to just appoint them since they weren't here.
I mean, Gianna would probably be a great person for that, but yeah, I, we can hold off, we don't have to do this today.
I was just wondering.
So we've got consent on it, we'll bring up the assignment of duties next time. Good? Yeah? We had an open space plant committee designated, so Barry Jarvis, Parks and Recs Director, has asked that we appoint somebody to the open space. Basically, they're saying five to six times plus two public vision sessions. The first meeting is Monday, 11:25 from 2 to 4. Is there anybody who feels strongly about being on this?
Anybody who's free Monday from 2 to 4?
Yeah. I mean, there's no way I can do Monday on two, on that Monday from 2 to 4, that's just not going to hap- happen. Anybody else feel strongly or want to?
Yeah, I don't. No, you want, you want to say something? No, no, you want, I had a question.
I mean, Jamie, this is right up your alley, man.
I had a question, just what I was going to say, I know.
The, the 2 to 4 is not an issue if I had to do that, but, so what, what is this in truly intent, what are we believing the commitment is outside of this, is she giving any?
Yeah, she's saying five to six times over the course of the project, which is eight to 12 months and two visioning sessions. So five to eight meetings.
Thanks, Bronwyn.
This is all you, man, you like this kind of stuff.
Yeah, definitely.
All in favor of Jamie? Let's nominate her him.
I do not have.
I'm glad they're putting this together.
I do not have an issue doing it.
Nice.
Well, excellent.
Jamie, it is, Barry. Yeah, no, I mean, this is going to be pretty important, especially, you know, Marty and I were talking about this earlier about, you know, once Wolf Swamp gets shut down, right? The only open space for practices is going to shift to like those horrible fields behind the schools. And so we're going to have, we're going to want to have a voice at the table for, for that. So. All right. No executive session, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that the school committee adjourn the November 12th, 2019 school committee meeting.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? Thank you for joining and see us next time.